Good afternoon, or good morning, ladies and gentlemen, look at that.
Good morning.
It's approximately 10:45 on the morning of Thursday, January 30, 2025. My name is Mike Kelly, I'm the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. We're here for an agenda review for the action agenda that'll occur on February 5, 2025. At this time, I'd ask the clerk to call the roles of the elected.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer. Brewer here. Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
I'm here as well, all are present, and I'd ask the clerk to read item number one.
Consider approving the January 16, 2025 business session minutes.
Any questions on those minutes that everyone will be able to vote upon? Seeing none, how about item number two, please?
Application number E-24-446-FP. Consider a request from Judd Clausen, Phelps Engineering Incorporated, applicant on behalf of EMCH Feed and Elevator Company, landowner, for a final plat for Metcalf 211, fifth plat, a two-lot industrial subdivision on 21.8 acres on property zoned PEC 3, Planned Research Development and Light Industrial Park District located at 7325 and 7400 West 210th Street.
Michelle Leininger is here from the Planning Department to address this item that is within the 3rd District. Ms. Leininger, welcome back.
Morning, Michelle Leiniger, County Planning Staff. This is a redevelopment of Phase 2 of the Metcalf 211 development subject properties shown on the aerial are outlined in blue. This is a simple lot line adjustment. Top left is what it looks like today, bottom right is what they're changing it to. It's just their buyer needs more property, so we're moving those lot lines. A revised preliminary and final development plan will need to be reviewed and approved prior to any building permit and development on either of these properties. At the January 8 East Zoning Board meeting, no members of the public spoke regarding the application, and the Board unanimously recommended approval as recommended by staff. I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much, any questions at this time? Commissioner Brewer, this is within your district.
Yes, and this is not a question, just wanted to share a comment. I have no issue with this, and I know it went through the East Zoning Board as you indicated, and so I look forward to the next phases of that, and I appreciate the work.
Thank you.
So, well, we'll go to Commissioner Ashcraft, but then I had a comment. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I was just looking at the consent agenda, and there seem to be two planning items on consent. Historically, all planning items have been on action. What is the nature of this change? Because we'd always been told that planning items had to be on action, so has something changed?
So, yes, and that was the comment I was going to make, and I appreciate you teeing me up here, so let me at least try to make contact with the ball.
Thank you.
We received an email from Jay Leipzig, our Planning Director, this weekend in consultation with the Legal Department and the Planning Department, in our ongoing efforts to be as effective and efficient in our meeting processes. You'll see that beginning with this agenda and for agendas moving forward, if an item is brought before the Board with the unanimous approval from either the West or the East Consolidated Zoning Board, or the Planning Commission, and a recommendation of approval from staff, and no objections are raised by the public, this item may be placed on the consent agenda. And while it might not always be placed on the consent agenda, we wanted to provide that tool to our staff. So, that's why you're seeing this one, which comes as a plus-plus with no objections raised, placed at this time on our consent agenda. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that clarification and have no objections, because we can always pull it off of consent if we want, so I understand that. So, my question then, Ms. Leiniger, is it looks like it's just an interior line change, the exterior boundary is not changing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments at this time? All right, then, thank you, Ms. Leiniger, and we'll hear item number three, please.
Resolution number 011-25. Application numbers E-24-444-PDP and E-24-445-FDP-AU. Consider a request from David Escove, applicant in J&amp;B Properties Midwest LLC, landowner, for a preliminary and final development plan for a 5,888 square foot building on 0.82 acres on property zoned PEC-3, Planned Light Industrial Park District, located on Lot 7, Griffin Industrial Park, Phase 2, in Section 8, Township 15, Range 25.
Thank you very much, Karen Miller from the Planning Department, here to discuss this item that also appears in the 3rd District. Welcome back.
Thank you, Karen Miller with the Planning Department. This application is recommended for approval by the zoning board and planning staff. We haven't had any inquiries from the public regarding this application. This is a request for a preliminary and final development plan to construct an almost 6,000 square foot building for office, warehouse, and manufacturing uses on a little under an acre on property zone PEC 3 district, which is a light industrial district. Per the requirements of the zoning regulations, constructed of the proposed building requires an approved preliminary and final development plan. The subject property is within the Griffin Industrial Park, which is located generally at 206th Street and Metcalf Avenue. Here is an aerial of Griffin Industrial Park. It's an approximately 10-acre development established in the 1980s, and currently has that PEC 3 industrial zoning all over the property. The subject property is located toward the end of the cul-de-sac and is denoted by the blue star and outline with, red star outlined with blue. The applicant proposes a new building to be constructed on the vacant property that is similar to the existing industrial and commercial buildings along 206th Street. Here's the proposed site plan for the development plan. Here's the proposed elevations. You'll notice that it's a, it'll be a metal building with metal siding, a gabled roofline and articulated with windows. There's an awning over the main personnel door. The main body of the building is light gray, and the office area is articulated with dark gray. And with that, I'll just note that staff recommends approval of the development plan request because with stipulations, the proposal complies with the zoning district requirements and the zoning and subdivision regulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miller. Questions or comments on the board, starting with Commissioner Brewer?
Once again, I appreciate the East Zoning Board, which, as we know, are made up of residents who are in that area, for their consideration and approval, the staff recommendation. As the slides you have shown us, or slides, I'm dating myself, as the presentation you've shown us, it's in keeping with the use of that land, it's in keeping with its neighborhood, its neighboring buildings. So, with that, I'm glad to see this continue to move forward and remain on consent if the body agrees.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Miller, just wanted to confirm, so all notices to affected property owners were mailed, and?
Yes.
Got no responses, no concerns?
Correct.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, thank you very much, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd ask the clerk to read item number four.
Resolution number 003-25. Consider adopting a resolution to establish vehicle weight limits for Metcalf Avenue Bridge south of 207th Street in the unincorporated, unincorporated area of Johnson County.
Jeff Voss, back with us from Public Works. Mr. Voss, welcome back.
Thank you. Good morning. There's a bridge on Metcalf Avenue over the Union Pacific Railroad just south of 207th Street that has some degradation to the foundation system of the structure that was discovered during routine inspections. The bridge is 32 years old, and other than this foundation issue, is in good shape and worth repairing. Public Works is in the process of working with consultants to gather information and develop a repair plan to fix the structure. While the structure is safe for the majority of users until repairs are completed, it's necessary to post the bridge for a reduced weight limit. This is a minor reduction in the capacity of the structure. Weight limit signs are classified as regulatory signs, and by state statute, need board authorization to post, although this posting is also required by, required by federal regulation. We will post the signs as directed by the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices in US 69 and other routes are available for trucks to use. We have coordinated with the appropriate city and county fire departments, and an agreement from the Sheriff's Office for this posting. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Brewer.
Am I, and this is an issue, once again, it's in District 3, and I'm familiar with this bridge, and I'm familiar with this section of Metcalf. So, one question for you is, am I correct that in the past, there had no, been no weight limit signage?
Correct.
And I think it's maybe a three-ton differential by posting the signage over what it could possibly be on that road?
Correct.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
And I know you're taking direction through the different regulations on the posting. When you look at the slide that is up right now, I know when you're traveling north on this road out of Miami County, because we're right, you know, not too many blocks from 215th, there's a left-hand turn that's a pretty, pretty easy redirect if I were a vehicle that can no longer be permissible on that bridge. It's a little bit more challenging if I'm traveling south on that road, and I know we checked into it, there's really not a lot of traffic that would exceed this new posting limit. Where does the south direction sign go that help people to kind of recover before they, before they would get to the bridge?
So, right now, Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices requires the postings to go actually on the bridge. There is no advance warning for it.
Really?
It's a national standard, and that's what we go by. The future upcoming MUTCD does allow for advan, actually requires advanced posting. It's a few years out before that's a requirement. We're waiting to see how KDOT and other agencies are going to be implementing that, further guidance, before we actually go out and put those signs. But that is coming, that advance warning will be coming in the next several years.
So, since this sign maybe will be a little bit before it gets up, right?
Yeah.
Will you have a recovery period to maybe get some of that preliminary? I only ask that because I think that section of the road, if I recall correctly, there's really maybe some, there's no hard shoulders. There's, it's a two-lane road, so there's not, if you are a vehicle that, that surpasses the, the posting of the weight limits, which will be new, you're going to be big, right? And the ability to do a U-turn is not going to be practical, so I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering how that works.
Yeah, it's just however they deal with it on any other structure at this point.
Okay.
So, yeah, I just, I would just rather wait and see what the actual regula, it's a regulatory sign, so there's a lot more legal implement.
Implications.
Implications of how those are posted. So, without that guidance, we're a little, I'm a little leery about going ahead and posting anything like that.
Right, and I know since the road's parallel with 69, that I have to believe the vast, vast majority of that type of vehicle is going to want to choose 69.
And we're really talking about that, so these postings, there's, there's 12 trucks that get load rated, but only three signs that are, three trucks that are posted, so those cover multiple trucks, and we're really talking about the exotic trucks that you really don't see.
The exception, not the rule.
Your standard delivery truck is not going to be impacted by this at all.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Yeah. Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, I just want to thank Commissioner Brewer for bringing that up, because she'll probably be the one who gets any neighbor complaints about that, if they're big trucks idling by the side of the road trying to figure out what they're going to do. So, I think your points are well-made, and appreciate knowing from Mr. Voss that those regulations are in, in conversation about change, so thank you.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Voss, I suspect a lot of people don't appreciate the fact that you have responsibility, you and your team have responsibility for all the bridges in the county. I was just wondering, how do you monitor and ensure that our bridges are up to snuff?
So, we do biannual inspection, right now, the feds require biannual inspections on all structures. That structure is changing, some can go longer now and some shorter, so we're working with KDOT through that. But they get annual, or relatively frequent inspections, very complete inspections. We go out and do work orders on the bridges that show minor defects and stuff. When we find these major problems, then we deal with it that way. We are the unincorporated county bridges, not the entire county, but we do keep a very close look at those, and that's one of our priorities.
Thank you. Mr. Voss, the only comment I had, and I was just hoping you can confirm my understanding, the Planning Sustainable Places project that we are working through with the City of Overland Park contemplates work on the northern portion, or north of this, on Metcalf, correct?
I am sorry, sir, I'm not aware of that grant application, so I cannot answer that question.
Well, something we can circle back with, with the board.
Yeah, I think that was maybe through transit, maybe? I don't know, but.
Thank you, all right. Commissioner Brewer.
I apologize, I just have one additional question, and this is, I confess, I'm not, you know, when I think of different types of vehicles, and I think about weights and tonnage, so I'm not sure if this falls with and without the, the posted weight. But we know that area is, has land, we heard about some development, right, going along right now, so we know that's going to continue. Does the postage of the, the new weighting limit sign, does that at all, could that be impactful to moving earth and materials and construction work that may be going along that corridor at some time in the future?
It could possibly impact the types of vehicles they choose to use, and what the axle loadings on those vehicles are, but, you know, they do construction all over with weight limit bridges, they take a look at what their routes are, they'll either pick an alternate route, or pick a vehicle that can safely, or load the structure appropriately, or the vehicle appropriately, so it should not be an impact.
Right, and in addition to, to 69 to the west.
Yes.
Noll is through at that point, and Mission is through at that point, so there's some additional roads that are not going over bridges that are through at that point if you had to do a, a workaround because of the weighting of the bridge.
Correct, and once we complete the repair of the structure, we'll be able to remove that weight limit, so.
Okay, so this is a temporary.
This is a temporary, although I would say tempor, long-term temporary, maybe three to five years.
Three to five years, okay.
To work through, it's a, it's a complicated situation with the railroad there and the vibrations hitting that structure, so we want to make sure we do the right repair.
I appreciate your work, thank you very much.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, I just wanted to, to clarify the reference to the Planning Sustainable Places grant, that was a, a grant that was received by Johnson County Transit and the City of Overland Park through the Mid-America Regional Council, and it provides project development funds to study the current level of service, of transit service along Metcalf, and from, from 123rd Street to I-35, and specifically the alignment of the 401 Metcalf Plaza Transit Route from Johnson County Community College to the Plaza, so.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair, I just want to make a comment, you know, how important those partnerships are, you know, receiving, helping us with those funds, so I appreciate Commissioner Hanslick and the Chair being a part of that.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to item number five, please.
Resolution number 008-25. Consider approving the resolution to install all-way stop signs at two intersections in New Century Air Center.
Mr. Voss.
Good morning again. The Johnson County Airport Commission owns a rail line along the Lenexa Parkway and crosses at Roland Parkway and 159th Street. The Airport Commission plans to resume rail service on this line, and has requested Public Works add stop signs to the rail crossings. Public Works conducted a study and determined that there are sight distance issues at both crossing locations, and that stop signs are warranted. To complicate matters, the rail line crossings are near intersections with Lenexa Parkway and 150, or with Lenexa Parkway at 159th Street and Roland Parkway, and Public Works has determined that converting both intersections to always stops will provide the most effective and safe solution for signage and traffic control. The Sheriff's Office has reviewed and supports the proposed stop sign installations. Stop signs are classified as regulatory signs, and by state statute, need board authorization to post. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, I appreciate you putting these on consent, you know, these items are vinted, you know, you've, you've conducted the study, you've got planning, you've got airport staff, you've got Airport Commission, Public Works, and the Sheriff's Department, so all those entities have been looking at this, and it takes a long time to get it through there, so I appreciate, plus it's staff time, continued staff time, which is So, I appreciate, plus it's staff time, continued staff time, which is costly. And then with the rail increase, these are such greatly needed. And I do might want to point out to my fellow commissioners, you know, that's on Row and was it Roland Park and Lenexa? So, you've got more traffic on there with the rail increase. Just thought I'd let you know that.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Is it a requirement if Public Works wants to put a stop sign somewhere that it has to come to the commission for approval?
Yes, any regulatory sign, so any white background sign or red background sign.
Very good. Just to clarify for me, if you would, Mr. Vos, installs...
Chair, if I may interrupt on that point, we are looking through the legal department as to whether a designation, if you, we were to bring a resolution forward, that you can designate that in light of what Commissioner Allenbrand had outlined, if all the criteria has met, and delegating that authority without bringing it back to the board. So, we're looking into that.
Thank you. That was the sub rosa interest I had in that. I mean, if it's high visibility or high impact, that's one thing. But basic safety, I was just wondering, but could you clarify? It says install stop bars. Is that just the painted lines versus kind of a bump-type thing to make people stop?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, it's just a white line, a wide white line. It indicates people where to stop. And then you may, at certain intersections, you don't have to stay there. You can creep forward so that you can see, but it's just to give an indication of where you'd be out of traffic.
Okay. Well, and maybe in the future, you can persuade Mr. Peddic to put in a roundabout.
A roundabout with the railroad through it. That would be interesting.
Oh, my God, that would be interesting, right? And trucks.
Not even worth joking about. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vos. Item number six, please.
Consider approving an agreement with the city of Overland Park for the replacement of the Flum Road Bridge over Coffee Creek with County General Reserve Cars Reserve and Federal Fund Exchange Accounts.
Mr. Vos again.
Yes, the city of Overland Park is requesting that Johnson County participate in a project to replace the Flum Road Bridge over Coffee Creek. And it also goes over a Parks and Rec trail approximately .2 miles north of 167th Street. Currently, Johnson County has 50% jurisdiction of the project and is adjacent to Heritage Park, which is a county traffic generator and not likely to be annexed. Long-range traffic projections show that a two-lane flum road will be sufficient for at least 20 years. Thus, a 32-foot-wide bridge cited to allow for a four-lane expansion in the future is proposed at this location. The agreement shows a split of project expenses 50/50 along jurisdictional lines with Overland Park and with Overland Park administering the project. Overland Park has secured $1.5 million in federal funding for the replacement of the structure to be used in 2027, which will be split evenly between JOCO and Overland Park's portion of the project. The budgetary estimate shows an anticipated $3.7 million in cost to the county, and Public Works recommends funding through County General Reserves, Cars Reserves, and supplemented by our Public Works Federal Fund Exchange Account. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vos. And just to clarify, the federal grant that is being provided to the city of Overland Park comes off the top before the split.
Correct.
So, we get as much benefit as Overland Park does from that.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Not necessarily a question for Mr. Vos, but is the money guaranteed? I mean, with the tenor of activity in Washington, are we? I just ask, and so would the project be contingent upon receiving the $500,000 grant? Or would we proceed even if we did not get it for some reason?
I think we would evaluate that situation and the timing of the project if the grant were to go away.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Brewer.
So, in the, thank you, Mr. Vos. In the briefing sheet, the funding overview, it indicates this is a planned cost. It's a budgeted, that's been approved in the FY fiscal year 2025 budget. So, we anticipated this. We are now coming back and getting approval to exercise the funds that we were planning to obligate and use them in the manner to which they were meant to be used. Is that an accurate interpretation of this?
Yes.
And I appreciate Commissioner Ashcraft's question regarding the federal funding. I think that's something that, is that something then you'll keep us attuned to? So, if something has to change and we have to make some other decisions, that comes back to the body?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I'm not sure if it necessarily, with the accounts that we're approving, I don't know that we would need to bring it back to the county or to the board for that approval.
It sounds like you'd have a $500,000 gap if those federal funds didn't come through.
Correct.
So, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I don't know if we would necessarily have to bring it back with the accounts.
I think we're navigating some uncharted territory with the repercussions of what may be happening at the federal level.
Yes. And there may, you know, project costs could go down. That could cover some of that.
Absolutely.
You know, so there's multiple ways that we could cover that cost. I'm not sure that we would necessarily need to bring that back, but we certainly would be, you know, keeping the county manager involved in that process.
I appreciate you kind of walking us through that, so thank you very much.
And I appreciate the questions. And I think, as we stated earlier, the momentum of Johnson County should continue. We should be business as usual at this point. Obviously, we don't control what we don't control. And if circumstances changes, we will address them accordingly. But until then, it's incumbent upon us to continue business as usual. All right. Thank you, Mr. Vos. Item number seven, please.
Resolution number 012-25. Consider application number E-24-443-CUP-AU for a conditional use permit for a golf driving range and 4,300-square-foot hitting shed on approximately 43 acres of a 74.57-acre property. Note, following the zoning board meeting, the applicant requested a change to one of the CUP stipulations. This will require the B O C C to remand the application to the zoning board for reconsideration.
Zoe Brown here from Planning to discuss this item. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Zoe Brown, Planning. This application is for a conditional use permit for a driving range and 4,300-square-foot hitting shed with a five-year term. And this is related to Wolf Creek, which is a private golf course. I wanted to just note at the top that following the zoning board meeting, the applicant requested a change to one of the stipulations for the CUP. The requested change is for stipulation number four regarding the demolition of a house and barn on the property. The structures are currently being used by the maintenance workers employed by Wolf Creek. And as I said, the property is owned by Wolf Creek. Both structures are in good condition, and Wolf Creek wishes to keep them. However, both structures are currently marked for demolition in the plans and in stipulation number four. Staff supports making the change, and this was not an issue brought up by either the public or the zoning board members at the meeting. However, any changes to the CUP stipulations require reconsideration by the zoning board. Therefore, the application must be remanded to the zoning board and reconsidered before it's approved by the B O C C. The motion to remand the case is in the briefing sheet. I'm happy to share details about the project now or wait until it comes back if the case is remanded.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Questions or comments at this time from the board? Commissioner Brewer.
I really apologize to my fellow commissioners. We just have a lot of stuff in District 3 in this particular agenda. I did attend the East Zoning Board meeting virtually, and there were a couple residents who came and had some concerns. I will just note that it was, within that meeting, the developers were amenable to tweaking some of what they're doing as far as providing some burns, trees, and privacies to meet some of the concerns that were brought up. I think that's what got the zoning board comfortable with going, having a unanimous approval of the project moving forward. And so, I'll be interested, and it doesn't look like with this remaining, the building, it's really, that was never part of the issue that was brought up at that point in time. So, it's more of what the owner-operator would like to do with some existing buildings. Is that correct, Ms. Brown?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, Ms. Brown, thank you very much for your time this morning. We'll move on at this time to item number eight.
Resolution number 013-25. Application number E-24-442-SPOX. Consider a request from Johnson County Park and Recreation District, applicant and landowner for a special permit to allow the continued use of the existing sports field lighting on the football fields at the Heritage Park Sports Complex on property zoned RN1, residential neighborhood 1 district located at 16240 Flum Road.
Diane Wicklund here to discuss this item that appears within the 5th district. Ms. Wicklund, welcome back.
Thank you, Diane Wicklund, Planning Department. So, the subject property is located in Heritage Park at 159th Street and Flum Road, as shown on the vicinity map there. This is a request for a special permit to allow the continued use of the existing sports field lighting on four of the football fields located in the Heritage Park Sports Complex. The existing sports field lighting has operated under a conditional use permit for the last 30 years. The requested special permit, if approved, will replace that conditional use permit, and it will not have a term and will not expire, unlike the CUP. This application proposes no new lighting or changes to the existing lighting. In addition, as part of the application process, Johnson County Park and Rec did state that they're going through a master planning process at Heritage Park. And as a result of that, they did indicate that there may be some proposed changes in the future to the sports lighting at Heritage Park. So, just to note that any future changes to lighting at the park would require a separate application process. So, just a few quick graphics here. So, here's just the surrounding area showing an aerial view of Heritage Park. This is just the site plan, and those brown rectangles are just showing the football fields that are lighted. Here's just a picture of the light poles. And here's a couple of pictures just of the football fields showing the lighting. So, just also to note that there were no members of the public that spoke at the zoning board meeting for this application. Planning staff recommends approval, and on January 8th, the zoning board also recommended approval of the special permit. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wicklund. 30 years of continued usage of these fields gives me comfort that the lighting in its continued use is consistent with the surrounding area and provides for great recreational opportunities for the kids who play football at Heritage Park. I remember playing football at Heritage Park, probably under these lights. So, thank you very much for the report. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Wicklund, I'm just curious. Why is this ground zoned residential? Why does it have, is the park department thinking about selling it off and turning it into individual homes? I mean, that, why?
Yeah, so, yeah, the parkland does have RN1 residential neighborhood zoning. I believe most of the parks do have a residential zoning that was transitioned in 1994 with the kind of county-wide rezoning that we did. So, no, I don't believe there's any plans for residential use, but that's the base zoning, yes.
Very good. So, is there a reason why this wouldn't go on consent?
Well, you're welcome to make the motion to put it there.
Well, with the, I apologize. I'm not that familiar with the new ruling. So, there was notice. There were no complaints. This is a renewal, somewhat of enhancement, but, I mean...
This would meet the criteria. I believe we were just being cautious so it was placed on, but this would be, we were just trying to be conservative as we introduced this to you. But yes, if that's your desire, that can be allowed.
I have no objections. I looked to staff to see if they have any. Okay.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Seeing none, we'll put it on consent for next week. Ms. Wicklund, thank you very much. How about item number nine, please?
Consider approving and authorizing an increase of $3,070,000 for the new Health Services Center capital project, bringing the new total project authorization in an amount not to exceed $116,524,000.
Mr. Barron is here to discuss this item. Is that the? Yes, it is the full item description. Mr. Barron, thank you very much. I want to thank you and your team for their presentation at the committee of the whole last week on this topic and for some of the enhancements that you've provided in not only meeting with members of the board, but within the presentation, talking about the return on investment from some of these enhancements. So, thank you for that. At this time, I'd welcome you to make any presentation or furtherance of the committee of the whole, and then I'm sure we'll have some discussion thereon. So, thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Kelly and Commissioners. Happy to be here today to present. As you mentioned, Tony Barron, Director of Facilities Management. Per the suggested motion here, as you can tell, just a quick history. Last year, the P B, Public Building Commission did authorize $113,454,000 for the new Health Services Center, formerly referred to as a Health Services Building. From there, we went to the drawing board through design and came back with some opportunities that we thought would be important to bring in front of the Board of County Commission. Some of those opportunities stemmed from, as I mentioned last week, as some board priority goals with sustainability and also the endorsement of the Kansas City Climate Action Plan. So, with that being said, we made a decision that it would, we felt important to bring these in front of you. So, with that being said, I am going to move into the presentation. I have a short presentation here on the items. And just for the note, I'm going, I have information provided on all three suggestions last year, the enhanced, excuse me, from last week, the enhanced water reclamation, the solar panels, and also the geothermal. Per the motion and the briefing sheet, we only recommended the enhanced water reclamation and the solar panel enhancements. We did provide information on geothermal if there was, if you all choose to discuss that. So, moving forward, on the enhanced water reclamation, I just want to capture, no pun intended, sorry, it does capture the rainwater here on the roofs. And this is something that we've been looking at from a sustainability perspective on how that looks and how we can reuse rainwater with two 5,000-gallon tanks that would be placed on-site and with a pumping system that would allow us to use that more along the lines of flushing toilets and garden and outdoor use. Per our use with the square footage and the potential of occupants being in the building, we estimated that we approximately could reuse 2 million gallons per year of water. This particular system, the majority of the components or the major components of this system, we expect to last the lifetime of the building. Now, granted, there will be pumps and small components that will need to be replaced throughout that. But the majority of the cost with the systems being underground, the piping, is expected life expectancy is the same as the building itself. We do feel like this will be a minimal impact on operating and maintenance impact, and we are excited about these opportunities to capture this water. I'm going to move on to solars, and then we can come back for questions. Do you mind moving me to the next slide, please? Thank you. As you can see here from the solar standpoint, as the information we shared last year, we have approximately 43,000 square feet of solar arrays that we are putting, that we are giving you the opportunity to approve to put on to the roof of the new Health Services Center. Just a couple of numbers here that we wanted to share with you. The anticipated GHD emission reduction here is approximately 51 tons of carbon dioxide. And what that's equivalent to are the items you see there. We equated it... We equated it to coal burned per year, that many pounds, 12 gas-powered vehicles, and carbon sequestered by 51 acres of forest. One of the items in our board priorities is how... Is energy reduction is something that's very important. And so what we are doing here is we're finding ways to become more sustainable with our own power sources, also knowing that there is some burden being put on the current grid. This will help us to be a little bit more sustainable if that time ever comes in the near future, that the grid can't support itself. We would have a few more options here by having solar on-site. Would you mind moving to the next slide, please? There we go. The cost of ownership analysis, as you see the numbers in front of you. The first cost, we went... We came with a simple payback period last week, and per the request of the Board of County Commissioners, we... You asked for a lifecycle cost analysis. And what that does, that dives us into quite a few details of what that looks like. A lot of factors, it's a very complex equation. On top of that, one of the requests was for us to come back with debt service and what that looks like, not only just the upfront cost, but also the debt service on that over the 20-year life of that revenue bond. So we factored that into this equation also. That lasts over 20 years, as mentioned before. The energy savings here, it's... We use the calculation of the average rate from 2024 to calculate these energy savings moving forward. And then the operating maintenance costs, as you can see, is factored into that. On the bullet point here, you will see that this does include annual inflation, and we... Our team went back and forth on how to protect the integrity of the report from the engineer, and also how to factor in the annual inflation. As you see here, what the engineer has done from a lifecycle cost analysis, everything on the graph reflects net present value, which everything is based on today's numbers. So there were so many factors going into this, we made the decision to bring this to you in this manner. And I think a few of you had mentioned the simple payback was a little bit less on other projects you had heard of. There's many factors involved. And with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have right now, or I can go into the geothermal part of things. I believe I would prefer to stop here and answer questions on enhanced water reclamation and rooftop solar.
Well, Mr. Barron, thank you very much. Thanks for the additional information, the analysis that's been provided, and I will open up for questions. I'll reserve my questions at this time and open up for questions from other members of the board. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barron, first of all, thank you for the expansion on the information that is helpful. I... I'm not sure it's persuaded me yet, but I will look at this. I apologize, I have not been able to digest it fully, but before next week, maybe we could talk, get a little bit more of the incidentals down in my brain. So I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barron, for this chart, and I appreciate the dollars and cents comparison, but I'm also thinking about the benefits that aren't reflected in the dollars and cents. For example, the cost savings of having the building outfitted with solar panels while it's being built, rather than the cost of having to retrofit something if we later decide that's the way to go. I'm assuming it's much less costly to do it when we're actually building the new building than to try and go back and put something in. Also, you know, we don't know what the future's going to hold, and that estimated energy savings could change in the future, depending on what happens with other energy sources. So I don't think there's a way to include that necessarily in there, but I think it's really important to note that this graph does not reflect those other potential benefits of the system.
Thank you. And additionally, forgive the crude characterization, but in terms of the finances of the solar panels here, this is what we would refer to as a worst-case scenario, and that means the cost all directly to the county. If there are potential rebates, or state incentives, or if there's an opportunity for direct pay, this could be even a rosier picture than what's listed here, right?
That is correct. Per the report that we received, it was stated in there, this is a very conservative report on worst-case analysis, and from here, we feel pretty confident that the price could only... The return could go up, and the cost potentially could come down with incentives.
Thank you. Commissioner Burr?
Thank you, Mr. Barron, for meeting with me about this issue, and I have two questions for you, or one... I want to give you an opportunity to share one of the questions I had for you yesterday, to kind of share what that response can look like. So right now, we have a building, minimum life of the building, 50 to 75 years. We have a roof, regardless if we put the solar panels on it or not, probably about a 25-year roof life. I know that in the... It sounds as though in the design of the building and the roof, we've contemplated the ability to have the solar panels on, so that's kind of a committed cost already. You were sharing with me at the time that a roof or solar panel replacement has to occur, that I'm not replacing the whole mechanism of the solar panel? If you want to share a little bit about what lasts longer and what actually gets replaced potentially at that 10-year... At that 25-year mark?
Yes, that's correct. So a couple of points, if you don't mind, thank you for the question. A couple of points I will hit on is that when we talk about roof structure, of the current budget authority of $113 million, we have already planned on building a roof structure that will support solar, whether it be today or in the future. So that is in the original $113,454,000. And so that allows us to enhance with solar at a later time. Per the roof conversation, you are correct. The life expectancy of the panels and the roof expectancy, it depends on the type of roof that we go with. The roof's life expectancy will be anywhere between 20 to 30 years. With the panel life expectancy of 25 years, it matches well if we were needing to do a roof replacement, it would come alongside with replacing the panels themselves. After a conversation with engineers yesterday, they shared with us that they are seeing a little bit more longevity out of the panels as of recently. And the other part of that, too, if you're covering 43,000 square foot of roof, you are saving that damage, saving that from ultraviolet rays, which could extend the life of the roof also. So there's a couple of components, and those are very subjective components, but I wanted to share that with you. Now, if you extend this to the year... Life span of the building, let's use 50 years in this case, because for the solar panels, we did run a 25-year lifecycle cost analysis. At that time of replacement, let's say it's 25 years, we have already paid for the wiring infrastructure, we've already paid for the switchgear infrastructure, we've already paid for the structure to hold the panels. So at that time, we are most... We're replacing the panel and the inverter. And at that time, if you were... We haven't run a 50-year cost analysis, but when you get past paying for the upfront cost of this, the returns only get better and better as the years go. On top of that, solar technology is only improving. If you look at this statistics from 2010 to 2020, solar technology has come a long way, and we anticipate it to continue and improve, which has the potential to make that return on investment even better.
Just one follow-up question, if I may. Last week, at the Committee of the Whole, the presentation you provided, you said that the materials indicated that the roof, this enhancement of using the solar panels and the savings we could have on the energy, kind of... We hit that break-even point at around 19 and 1/2 years. Is that with the estimated interest factored in as well, or is that looking at the costs, the all-in cost of, say, the $2 million, and when that hits the point where we've paid for that cost, and now we're experiencing a higher rate of savings? I'm not clear on that one.
Yeah, so that is a good question. And so on that particular subject of the payback period, that was a very simple calculation there. When you factor in the interest and other components, it becomes a longer payback period, especially with the bond revenue interest on that. And we, like I said, there were so many factors into this, we could have... We can pick and choose so many different formulas that we chose to stick with the engineer's analysis on this.
So probably my last question that could be some... On this particular part of the presentation, that maybe we could be thoughtful of as we go forward to looking at this as a potential action item, is we've looked at the upfront cost of the solar panel during that work, right? And when we get to that break-even point?
Correct.
Now that we've estimated the interest cost over time, could we do a recalculation and say, what does that break-even point look like, knowing that the replacement cost is lower because you have the infrastructure of the framing, the wiring, already is committed cost, and we haven't anticipated of 75 to 50 to 75 years, so just going at 50 years? You know, what does that look like? I don't know if that's a reasonable question to ask, if those types of information is available to do a reasonable calculation that we can kind of see and understand.
Yes, I think that's a reasonable ask. Right now, per the software that our engineers use, their maximum projection would be at 40 years. Now granted, if somebody were wanting to take that formula and manually start to crunch numbers, that's a possibility. The other part about that, too, is the concept of time that we're under, and I know that would be a great calculation. We have put a lot of work on our consultants here in the last, probably, I'm going to say, five days. And I know, I'm pretty sure we could get the 40-year comparison to you. For us to be able to stretch that out any further would be a challenge. Cannot guarantee that I could have that information to you within the next seven days, but we can ask.
And if they've got... If the mechanism is built for the 40-year, even that just gives us just a little bit more insight on at what point in time we really hit that return on investment. That's the dollars and cents. You've also done a nice job of talking about what we decrease in emissions by taking this route. So I understand that needs to be a part of the decision calculus, but I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Allenbrandt?
Thank you, Chair. Well, Mr. Barron, I really appreciate all the work that you've done, and I think you've under... I think we are underestimating what the return's going to be on this building, doing projects in Arizona and Texas and using those solar film... Solar panels, and they've been... They're improved all the time. I know one of the buildings I had built that I was an owner of was all-electric, and it was amazing, you know, the cost savings at that point in time when that building was built. Just... And then even when the newer improved light bulbs came in, just using those, which you've done in some of the building, and the cost saving is phenomenal. So I really appreciate the work that you've done.
All right, Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you. You know, there are two things we can't live without, and that's energy and water. And I think the two projects that are proposed for this building not only provide real benefits, but I think it also sends the message that this county recognizes the issues with those... Both of those, water and energy. And one of the things that I think is exciting about the water reclamation program is that it signals to the rest of the state that Johnson County recognizes water is an issue, that we are also working to be part of the solution. Even though we don't live over the Ogallala Aquifer, we do know that water is something that we need to also pay attention to and be part of the solution. So I'm very supportive of both of these projects and look forward to having it on the agenda next week.
And to your point, Commissioner Hanslick, we're very fortunate to live in northeast Kansas, have an abundance of water. It was just a couple of years ago, not too close from home, where southeast Kansas, the river stopped flowing, and they had serious water restrictions down there, which is, you're talking 150 miles away. And so we always believe we have it. 50 years from now, 25 years from now is an unknown. Now granted, being proactive is great. We're still in a great situation. I'm not putting anything out there this as we're not, but I appreciate your remarks on that.
Mr. Barron, thank you. I don't see any more comments on this piece, and I'll just add, as probably no surprise to anybody, I'm very supportive of both of these projects, not only for the fiscal impacts, which I believe do pencil however we want to slice the bread, but more so for the additional benefits that may be more difficult to quantify in terms of dollars and cents, but do have a real impact on our community, and I think not the least of which, being having an energy source, even if there were grid challenges, to be able to provide energy to a crucial building and be able to provide services to some of our most vulnerable residents. So with that, I'd like to give you an opportunity, per our motion last week, to provide a little bit more background and information, while it's not recommended at this time, but to provide some more background and education regarding a potential geothermal system.
Sure. So geothermal, and we talked not in great detail last week, but we did hit it at a high level. And if you look at the map here, I just want to kind of refresh our memory about what it looks like here on-site of the Sunset Campus. We talked about using approximately 180 wells with a proposed geothermal well area, as you can see, to the north of the proposed building. Similar to what we talked about from the environmental aspect of this, the anticipated annual GHD emission reduction is 38 tons of CO2, which is equivalent to the coal and the nine gas-powered vehicles and 38 acres of forest, and that's on a per-year basis. Something that we feel is important of this, it is a... It is the efficient system right now, the most efficient system on the market. At this particular location, though, it is presenting some challenges, because where you see the proposed geothermal well area is very close proximity to where the existing building is. Also on this site, we also have a few challenges with drilling through some limestone. So the upfront cost is reflected in that. And if you don't mind, we'll move to the next slide, and I apologize if I'm hitting the right or wrong button up here. I just hit the right button. Thank you. And so the cost of ownership, this one was a little bit... In my opinion, this one's a little bit easier to talk about because we're comparing two systems. The whole focus of a lifecycle cost analysis here. So some points to hit on here, similar to the last slide, the anticipated interest was over 20 years. Operating and maintenance costs were based on industry standard, and then annual inflation was reflected as we pulled it back to do net present value here. So on the left-hand side here, we factored this in as a 30-year mechanical system, because the major components, most of the components of geothermal are going to give us that life expectancy, and that's where we got the 30 years of this. So as you can see, the upfront cost, 7.9, with the estimated interest on top of that, a 4.259. Energy costs, now, I showed energy savings on the solar panels. This is energy costs, not energy savings. So the cost of this system over the 30-year lifespan will be approximately to... The energy cost will be 804,000, and then the O&amp;M cost, roughly 4 million. And that O&amp;M cost also includes small capital enhancements on a piece of equipment that may not last 30 years, a 20-year component, a 15-year component. I think of boilers involved in this, they may need to be replaced before the 30 years. On the... So that's the geothermal side of things. Right now, we have the air-cooled chiller is within the $113,454,000 budget. But we did go ahead and break that down so we could have a side-by-side comparison here. As you can see, right now, we have a capital cost of just over a million, estimated interest of 568 on the current $113 million. The energy cost is where you'll see the major difference here. The energy cost is 2 million, over the 30-year life is 2,392 versus the 804 from the geothermal. And then on top of that, it looks like we do have the capital replacement costs, because this system is not designed to last 30 years, it's designed to do more of 15, 20 years. So we did put a $219,000 capital replacement cost formula in this side-by-side comparison for a total of 8.5 million. I will pause there for questions. I will pause there for questions that you may have.
Questions at this time? Why don't you go ahead and continue then?
So moving forward, at this point, I'm going to hand this off to our Budget and Financial Planning Director, Robin Symes, to talk about the cost summary.
Morning, Robin Symes, Budget Financial Planning. This'll actually just be a quick slide. As you saw from the previous information in the committee of the whole, we were giving you the capital budget impact of each three, each of those three options. And then we also gave you that annual debt service, which, what we didn't do, if you were to take just a simple twenty-year math formula, it didn't include the interest. And so here you can see the capital budget impact, the interest on that debt financing, and then the total principal and interest costs. And so then that would match up to the annual debt service. That's it. So I don't know if there's any questions on cost.
Thank you, Robin.
I will stand for any further questions that you may have.
Commissioner Fast.
The whole team was in agreement, I mean, Brian, sustainability, consultants, facilities, to not recommend the geothermal system. Is that correct?
Yes, the, we talked about the triple bottom line, we talked about, and this just did not hit the economic box for us based on the, the pay, simple payback is what's, which is what we calculated initially, which is what we talked about last week.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, I appreciate the effort.
Yeah.
And while one particular site may not be the right fit for every enhancement, I appreciate that we're looking at these possibilities. We're being innovative in the way that we power our buildings and being intentional about how they impact the health and well-being of our community, who's not only using the building, but the broader community. I'd encourage facilities to continue doing this for any future projects, whether it be rehabilitation of existing facilities, or whether it be new investments that we choose to make collectively as a community. And I think one of the things that'll come with a little bit more experience in doing this is to have a mechanism to consider the benefits and the costs in the way that balances all of the weight that these energy enhancements have in the process. And so while there, I think, is probably no perfect way to do that, I appreciate that we're being intentional about thinking about that return from a holistic perspective. And so I, I look forward to more conversations on these opportunities ahead, whether they be solar, water, geothermal, or others, as we continue to make investments for the future generations in Johnson County.
Mr. Barron, Commissioner Fast.
I just wanted to say, you know, water is our issue, and you, and commission's going to hear more of this, this is my new passion. The Kansas River levels are down, and also the amount of good water is down, so it's, it's getting harder for Water One because there's more silt in the water, more contamination from all the farm chemicals. So we're having to draw more off the Missouri River, and thank God we have rights on the Missouri River. That wasn't, that didn't happen that long ago. But so water, it is our issue, too, and, and I look forward to, how can we, you know, reclaim more water from our buildings? Commissioner Hanslick and I went to this great tour of this company, you know, that use water-saving devices on all the sinks, water, you know, I, you know, so that you, and I think about that, that tour every day when I run my shower, how, you know, you, you run your shower for, like, sometimes five, ten minutes, and I had older water treatment, and it was taking fifteen minutes. And that's a lot of water till it heated up. And so my new one, it just takes, you know, a few minutes. And I know you've looked at that with the facilities, but I would, you know, I think that's ongoing assessment of how do we conserve water when we turn on the faucet or sink, how much of our toilets are running constantly? And, and, you know, we're the largest employer of the county, we use a lot of water in every building.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Fast, yeah, you know, water is very important in, in the unincorporated area with development going on. You know, there is a shortage of water out there of trying to find the right hookups, and so it is very important, and I appreciate this entire commission paying attention to what's going on.
Well, thank you all very much for the good discussion. Thank you, Mr. Barron. At this time, we are going to move on to items numbers ten through twelve. And absent objection from the board, I'm going to ask the clerk to read all three in together.
Item number nine, or excuse me, item number ten, resolution number two zero two five dash one, sitting as the governing body of Fire District Number Two, consider adopting resolution number two zero two five dash one, resolution requesting the consolidation of Johnson County Fire District Number One and Johnson County Fire District Number Two. Item number eleven, consider acknowledging receipt of resolution number twenty-five dash zero zero one from the governing body of, governing board of Fire District Number One, and the resolution number two zero two five dash one from the governing board of Fire District Number Two, both requesting the consolidation of Fire District Number One and Fire District Number Two. And item number twelve, resolution number zero one four dash two five, consider adoption of resolution number zero one four dash two five, consolidating Johnson County Fire District Number One and Johnson County Fire District Number Two, and creating the Johnson County Consolidated Fire District Number One.
Jim Francis, the Fire Services Administrator for Johnson County, is here to provide a, an update to us on these items. I'll again thank him and Chief for the joint board meeting between us, sitting as the Board of Fire District Two and the Board of Fire District One. Further report you'd like to provide, sir?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, Jim Francis, Fire Services Administration. I just wanted to run down and give you an overview of this. This first item is the formality of, of approving or adopting the resolution requesting consolidation to the B O C C. I'm happy to give you any of the background or rehash anything we talked about on December tenth, if you would like.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Chair, I really appreciate you reading all three of these together. This has been something that's been in, in progress for the five years going on, the fifth year that I've been working here. And I know, I really appreciate all the work that you've done, you know, so this is nothing new. There's a lot of work that's gone into this, and I look forward to when we can actually vote on it and get it through. And is this something, does this have to be, can it be on consent, since we're just, no, it has to be, okay. I just was, yeah, okay.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I think recognizing the unanimous support of both boards is a good thing, but we'll keep this one on, on action. Why don't you go ahead and continue with the other two items, sir?
Okay, item number two is, you're sitting as the B O C C, not as the governing body of Fire District Two, and you're acknowledging receipt of the resolution that was passed by District One on January fourteenth, and the resolution that we, and hope that you pass next week for Fire District Two. You're acknowledging receipt of both of those resolutions.
Understood, and the third item.
Third item, you're sitting as the B O C C, and this formalizes you would be adopting the resolution to consolidate. I'm happy to give you any of the background, we've already discussed on multiple other meetings, specifically on December the tenth, and talk about the benefits of this. But as you know, there, there's been extensive discussion and study on this. In 2017, the county hired a consultant, E S C I, to look at the fire districts, and one of the things they emphasized was the value, the advantage of consolidating these districts. And then in 21, we took the first step of action on eliminating, if you will, the Fire District Two Fire Department and turned it into a taxing entity only, where we began consolidate, or excuse me, contracting with Fire District One to provide the service, with the intent that it would formally be merged at some point. That language was put in, in those contractual agreements. And then on December tenth, we had the work session, and as you indicated, both boards approved that, moving this direction. But let me talk for a minute about the benefit of this. So in multiple discussions with Chief Morley and staff and County Budget Office, we have done some analysis. We strongly believe there will be many administrative redundancies that will be recognized, that can be eliminated, that are cost savings to this consolidation. District One presently has an unpaid chief position that, or excuse me, a paid chief position that's presently unfilled, that my role with the county assisting them, should the consolidation occur, that position can be eliminated, additional cost savings. If we take down the contractual barriers that exist with assets and treat this district as one, instead of two independent districts with everybody owning their own assets, we will optimize resource management. So, and specifically by removing those contractual barriers that exist today. We'll be able to share reserve apparatus, frontline apparatus, other resources, and eliminate any duplication of resources. So we do anticipate cost savings. The plan, as we have discussed, is to take those recognized cost savings and put it where there is tremendous need. Right now, Fire District One is in need of additional firefighters. As of the fall, they had twenty-two people assigned on duty with a minimum staffing level of nineteen. That recently changed to twenty-three on duty with a minimum of nineteen because Fire District Two increased the contract payment to pay for three additional people. What's being proposed is, after consolidation in 2026, there would be three additional positions added to the firefighters, and in 2027, three more added. We've done the five-year projections with the Budget Office on this, we believe we can do it. We believe we can do this and obtain a lower general fund mill levy than what exists today for Fire District Number One. One of the other large cost savings that's been recognized, right now, Fire District One is limited on options on how they replace fire apparatus. They have some apparatus that need to be ordered now. Right now, they, they do lease agreements, and Chief, correct me if I misspeak, I think they have six lease purchase agreements on apparatus. That costs a lot of interest. We believe, with the consolidation of pooling of funds and, and resources, looking at the bigger picture, we believe we'll be sitting in a position to start making cash purchases. Not saying we would stop lease purchases entirely, but we should be able to reduce that greatly, which will have a net savings of hundreds of thousands of dollars over the lease purchase agreements. So we, we find that as a tremendous benefit. I should just state that the contractual agreement with Overland Park would not change, they would still be responsible for running the territory east of Lackman Road, and contractual relationships with Miami County Fire District Two would remain intact as well. Happy to stand for any questions.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. Again, I think that sometimes how much work goes in to looking at these, how much time and preparation that goes in from staff, and recognizing how important the financial savings it is for consolidation, to me is important. And Commissioner Brewer, I really appreciate you being present in these meetings, since part of it's in your district as well. I think here, again, is where you've had a lot of staff, you know, working on, you know, the advantages that this is going to be, and I would be remiss if I didn't say something about our financial department and the work that they've been doing on putting a long-term plan into place with capital improvement, reserves, and, and helping with that. So I just want, wanted to say how important this is and the financial outcome from this, and how much the staff has been involved. There's been a lot of work for many years on a study that was completed some time ago.
Thank you, Commissioner Brewer.
So I first want to lead with my thanks and gratitude. Mr. Francis, I know that you have led this work from the very beginning, and it's, and I appreciate the time you took with me when I was looking at this position to run, to really understand the issue, understand the complexity, and to really understand the yeoman's work of everyone involved. I really want to give my sincere thanks to Commissioner Allenbrand. You have been a vocal and energetic and engaged and involved champion of this work. That's very important because you led with safety and service first. What's the best way we can have safety and service for our residents in, in predominantly District Six and District Three? We know this is a growing area with resident density. We know that we had challenges ahead of ourselves, and, and the amount of, of cost containment and cost efficiency, but that's secondary to leading with safety and service. It's second, and it's also right up there with, how do we attract and retain quality staff? And we know we're going to be growing that staff. And then how do we maintain or reduce the cost burden to the residents in being able to serve with excellence? And I just, just want to take that time and that space to recognize both of you for the years of work, and, and really for that focused dedication to, to seeing this across the, I'm trying to use a sports analogy, across the end zone, across the finish line, however we want to describe it. But, but my sincere thanks for District, from District Three, for what this is going to mean for our residents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Brewer. I think sports references are exclusively Commissioner Meyer's territory.
I'm going to like golf myself.
I didn't know. Did you have a question or comments?
Just a quick comment, and, and I struggle with it a little bit, but, but I understand the, the benefits and the advantages that you talked about. I fully understand, and, and I'm in agreement. But I also like to hear the other side, and I think I've brought this up before. I like to know, what are some of the disadvantages?
Excuse me, can you check your mic, please?
All right.
Thank you.
I, I like to know what some of the disadvantages, I mean, I have in my mind what some of the disadvantages could be, but I want to know, make sure that I'm not missing something from a disadvantaged standpoint versus all of the benefits and advantages that, that have been presented.
Change is hard, and change is harder for some people to swallow. I'm a public safety guy. Even firemen, fire, of all people, firemen hate change. This is tough, changing into a new uniform or a new patch, that may not have to happen here. But all those things are hard. But I think everybody understands it's progress, and it puts us in a better operating position futuristically as this area grows. Are there challenges? Sure, there's probably challenges of people dealing with change and the mindset associated with this. I'm pretty confident the public isn't concerned about who shows up. They want somebody to show up quickly, that's well-trained, that can take care of their problem. We think this puts us in a better position to do that. In fact, when I'm talking about adding the third person, or three people in twenty-six and three in twenty-seven, those people would have a direct impact on the residents, specifically in the city of Gardner, where they have a busy fire station on one hundred and eighty-third Street, the busiest station in the fire district. And if Chief Morley wants to expand, I'll let him expand on this, but that's probably priority number one because they have a lot of back-to-back calls there. This would allow secondary apparatus to come into play, would meet the high call volume, which will in fact reduce response times as the call volume escalates. There's more good by far than the negative of dealing with a change, because I don't anticipate any negative to the operation. The negative is up here with people handling change. Thank you.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I echo the comments that my fellow commissioners have made, but I wanted to go a little bit deeper on Commissioner Meyer's question. I understand that there are some ongoing discussions concerning governance. Can you elaborate on that issue and how it will impact the operations, if it will impact operations?
Okay. So right now, there is a, you all are the Board of Directors for Fire District Two, and there's an appointed board for Fire District Number One. Obviously, both boards are in agreement to move this direction. What's on the table and what is included in the resolution is that the Board of County Commission would be the governance, and there would be an advisory board created and pegged, if I misspeak, tell me, but there would be- if I misspeak, tell me, but there would be, the makeup of the advisory board would have the, excuse me, the third district commissioner appointing one member, the sixth district commissioner appointing one member, the chair appointing two members, and representatives, specifically the city administrator of Gardner or their designee, the city administrator of Edgerton or their designee, and the city administrator of Spring Hill and their designee would serve on this advisory board. That's a big deal. It's a big deal, because right now, they don't have that opportunity to have that discussion and have that direct communication back to this board, who ultimately controls the fire district's budgets. They don't have that seat at the table. This gives them that seat at the table.
So even though some of this district will be, will overlap with the Fifth Commission District, the Fifth Commissioner will not have an appointee?
I can't speak to that specifically, but I will tell you, there are, as far as landmass goes, there are probably total acreage, it is extremely small, the territory that would be in the Fifth District. That would fall within the boundaries of this.
Fair point. Thank you. Commissioner Allenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry to interact again, but I, I just want to say that Chief Morley has done a lot of work, and it's not easy making changes and looking into the, you know, making these changes because of the way it's been done always before. I just want to remind, you know, when, when I first got involved in it, there's where, there were no websites, there was no public transparency of what was going on within those stations. And I'd be remiss, again, the board spent time meeting with the firefighters, and, you know, recently, Adam Norris has been going with me to some of those meetings, and we've heard from those firefighters, they are 100% in support of this, because what they've seen, they were the lowest-paid firefighters. They were paying for their own wellness checks, they were paying for their own education. Having a larger pool to pull from helps them with their insurance needs and benefits, and being able to see that. And I've heard that, because I attend those meetings, and getting that feedback from those firefighters. So I just want to let my fellow commissioners know that.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Francis, and to Chief, for being here today. We'll see these items on next week's action agenda. We will, at this time, adjourn our agenda review, allow the clerk to change the technology, and then begin an agenda review for the Special Public Building Commission meeting. Thank you. Adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.